Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April the 7th meeting of the Richmond Common Council. Please stand for pledge allegiance and remain standing for a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this gathering today. Bless everyone that is here. Bless everyone that is en route. Bless us that we will be about your business this evening in making the best decisions that we can make for the Richmond community and all of their residents and citizens here. In the mighty name of Jesus, by the power of the Holy Spirit, bless the least, the last, and the lost, the marginalized, disenfranchised, the underrepresented, the underserved, those not served at all, those not represented at all, and the voiceless. In the mighty name of Jesus, by the power of the Holy Spirit, amen, amen, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Wright.
You're welcome.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhardt.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We need to amend our agenda. Mr. Goss?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by striking Resolution 22025.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to strike Resolution Number 22025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting on March the 17th.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Bumbalo.
If there's no corrections or additions, I move that we accept the minutes as submitted.
Okay.
Have a motion in a second to accept the minutes as submitted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Presentations, petitions, memorials. Mr. Price, you're on.
There you go.
Good evening. My name's Howard Price. I live here in Richmond, Indiana, 3063 Dogwood Lane. If you're watching this and some of this is new to you, or you want to join what I'm trying to do in the town, I'm going to give you my phone number and you can give me a call. I'm here to talk about litter tonight. I've got my typical litter attire on when I go around the park and other streets and I pick up litter for. But I've come to realize that, hey, it's not just one person that's going to clean up the litter thing here in town. It's going to take the whole town, everybody. I'd like to make sure that I'm not here to disparage any efforts or to point any fingers at anybody, not at all. So I hope nobody takes offense about what I'm going to ask for or think we ought to do in town today or later on in the future. About 10 months ago, we passed a litter ordinance. It's late, that kind of activity to get rid of the litter, and I think they were right. We still have that problem. So that's turned out to be true. So I'm thinking about, instead of relying on that litter ordinance, that we should take, or the communities should take, a different approach. And what might that approach be? Well, it's to get more organizations involved. I don't know if you're familiar with SPUR, Society for Preservation and Use of Resources. They've reached out to me and I've reached out to them, that we should get together and try to get some organization about places that should we get the litter cleaned up that have maybe been neglected. The city's done some great work. They've cleaned up a lot of places, gotten rid of a lot of the homeless people. So I want to commend the city on doing that, and I look forward to them continuing to do that in the future. But they really don't get into the small neighborhood cleanups, like down the street, on the north side, or some on the south side, that really need a good cleaning and just walking through, cleaning out the sidewalks and the gutters and that kind of thing. You can't do that once every year or once every six months and expect it to get any better. It needs to be done more or less on a regular basis all the time. So to do that, we need to get the young kids probably involved with that at the school level, to get them organized, have some events where they can come out and participate. I know they're doing that with the alley cats down there on the north side. That needs to be done a lot more in this town, a lot of different places. Mr. David Hogg is helping me out with that situation. I don't know if you're familiar with him or not. We're trying to get to the schools and seeing if we can't get some meetings at the school and some activity there before the school year lets out. We need to really get involved with the newspaper, get them to recognize people that have done a good job in this town, promote that. We can get on radio with public announcements. We can put signs up on things that have been done. So there are a lot of ways we can go about starting to clean up our litter situation. Council, the mayor, you guys are the elected leaders of this community, and if you take the lead and make it an emphasis item, I think it would help quite a bit. What can you do? Well, you're already doing some of it. You're doing proclamations, certificates, that kind of thing. I know you're supplying dumpsters at some point, and I'd like to see you continue to do that. If at every meeting you had somebody come in, you recognize them for their efforts in the community or the business, I think it would go a long way to promote that kind of activity. Organizations, we can reach out to organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boys Clubs, Girls Clubs, those kind of organizations. Downtown has an organization which we could reach out to get them involved. As I said before, we have schools, there are fraternal organizations out there, individual businesses, and most of all, just individuals. You know, if you go on Amazon and look up ashtrays, $6 to $22, you can buy an ashtray to put in your car instead of putting the butt that I've mentioned before out in the street. You can also go on there and get a trash bag for $6 or $22 or whatever. But the individuals can do that if we can make it an emphasis item. We just have to change the culture in Richmond, I think. I would like to ask everybody just to walk out their door in the morning, pick up the litter off the sidewalk, pick it up out of the yard, anything that's blown in there, and maybe once a week, just go out there and sweep up the gutter. You don't need to wait for a street sweeper to come out there and do that. I know I'm talking to the kind of, you know, the church choir here about things to be done, but it really needs to do that, and we're coming up on a good time. I mean, it's starting to get springtime, even though it snowed last night, it's still going to get warmer. So now's the time to get those things in place and in action. And I would like to commend the council. Some of the council members have reached out to me about doing things and helping things and promoting it, and I really appreciate that. It will go a long way. That's about it for me.
Any questions for Mr. Price at this time?
Pardon?
I was asking if anybody had a question.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Howard, I want to thank you for your efforts and your continued dedication to trying to help get the city cleaned up. And for full disclosure, Howard and I have met recently and are working together, and Primex is also involved in helping us with this.
Yes, they are.
So we all join together, we can make this happen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Howard.
Yeah, David Hogg talks about beautiful Richmond. That's what he wants to see, and I think it can happen, again, like if we all pull together.
Yep. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Since this has been brought to our attention and since we've passed a few ordinances and proclamations, so to speak, we have had some successes with that. Mr. Mayor, could you tell us how much you've picked up as far as trash?
How many tons? Lost track. I do have something from Denise, Superintendent of Parks Department, couldn't be here tonight. She wanted to remind people that they're starting their volunteer cleanup days around the parks. But she also wanted to comment that on her team already this year has cleaned up over 2,635 pounds of trash from Glenmoeller Park to Gorge Trail, Test Road, just everywhere. Just her employees, no volunteers. The first volunteer day is next Monday, right, Pat? Next Monday at 8:30, Freeman Park. Be there. Wear your work clothes. We're going to clean up New Paris Pike. So watch the Parks Department website. The Parks Recreation Newsletter was in Western Way News last week. It has all those dates on there to help the parks do all the cleanup work. And then, Pat, like you mentioned this morning, and department heads, they do partner with a lot of communities, organizations, and bring out dumpsters at no charge, right? So keep track with that on the sanitary district too, so. Yes, but the more the merrier. It's everybody's problem.
Right.
Yeah.
It's everybody's problem. And the biggest problem is, you know, a piece of litter blows onto your yard, you need to clean it up. But you didn't create the problem. So it's really hard to find this person for littering when it probably happened three or four houses or even a block away. So that's one of our challenges in law enforcement is to, unless you see someone literally dumping trash, you can't find them because you don't know necessarily where it came from. But like Howard, I clean up my street all the time, clean out storm drains all the time, out there in my boots. So it's funny, there's a woman with two children, and she's kind of taking the lead and following me now. So Friday, she was out with her kids, walking home from school, and she went past my house and picked up some trash in front of a neighbor's house, and she lives three blocks away. So it's a trend. Start cleaning up in front of your house and other people clean up from their house.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go now to Resolution Number Three.
A resolution of the Richmond Common Council regarding approval of the establishment of the Smith Hill Economic Development Area.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Beth Fields, Director of Strategic Initiatives. We do have three different items for Smith Hill on tonight's agenda, and I'm going to briefly go through the three of those while I'm here, so then that way we can cover all of that at once and we won't have to go back for the others. The first thing that you have before you is Resolution Three. This is what is designating the economic development target, I'm sorry, economic development area. So you'll see there is a map included with there. This is the approximate 80 acres. This journey started in February on the 25th when the Redevelopment Commission adopted a declaratory resolution indicating their intent to create this area. The Advisory Plan Commission reviewed this and determined it was in line with our comprehensive plan on February 26th. On March 3rd, Common Council, you approved Resolution One 2025, which accepted the Advisory Plan Commission's recommendation. And then on March 17th, you heard on first reading, Ordinance 2025. 2025, sorry, 20, 2025. Can't quite get that one out correctly. So we will have this resolution, that's before you, talks about the target area, which I am going to invite Lisa Lee from Ice Miller up to talk about why we have to do this ordinance or this resolution separate from Ordinance 20, which is assisting with the process.
Thank you, Beth. I think we have a couple of different things going on here. The resolution is the final step in the creation of the Economic Development Area. As Beth already went through all the different things that have occurred, this is the final step for the creation of the Smith Hill Economic Development Area and the two allocation areas, TIF areas within that. And then Resolution, I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 20-2025 is the ordinance which you did hear at your earlier council meeting. That is creating the Economic Development Target Area. The purpose of that is so that we may capture the TIF generated by the townhomes in this Smith Hill project. As I've mentioned in a couple of different meetings, I'm not sure if I've mentioned it to the council, townhomes kind of fall in between the normal single-family rooftops that the single-family housing TIF is intended to capture and the multifamily apartments or large condominium complexes that actually are assessed as commercial property under Indiana's assessment manuals. Townhomes are that in-between product that the DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance, didn't really know how to address because they're not a single-family rooftop. And unless they're four stories, which most townhomes are not, that would be a little much, then they're supposed to be assessed as residential, but they didn't fall under the single-family housing TIF. So the legislature gave us the opportunity to capture TIF on townhomes if we create an Economic Development Target Area. This area is the exact boundary of the project and the Project TIF area. It is not intended to go outside of those boundaries and take in any other townhome that might be constructed in the city. So it's really, it's solely Project TIF-related, and that's the whole purpose of this Economic Development Target Area. And then your final ordinance tonight is 21-2025. That's the bond ordinance. That's the Economic Development Commission bond financing that we've done or have approved for Blue Buffalo and others. We've approved it for Flaherty and Collins. We haven't gotten to that closing yet. This is in that same vein, and so that's what that ordinance is. We did a presentation on that at your last council meeting, and Jason Simler is here with the financials that have been handed out to you that he can also speak to. So those are the three actions with respect to Smith Hill. Happy to answer. Any questions?
One question I have. On Resolution Three, you indicated we have a map. We don't have a map, but it is the same map that's on Ordinance 19, correct?
Yes.
Ordinance 20.
I'm sorry, Ordinance.
Yeah, the map for this Economic Development Area was on the declaratory resolution that was adopted by the Redevelopment Commission. So there's not a map attached to this. It is the same map that's attached to your target area.
Okay.
The TIF and the target area are one and the same, boundary-wise.
Mr. President.
Any questions?
Yes. Would you explain the special interest rate on this project? I think that's very important for the bond.
Yes, the special interest rate, this is going through the Indiana Finance Authority, through their Residential Infrastructure Fund program. So the interest rate here, it just changed. Is it 3.5? 3.15 is the interest rate on this financing. If you recall, Flaherty and Collins was more like 7.5% because that's more being purchased by a third-party bank. So the state has stepped up here and awarded 4.33 million to this project at that 3.15%. There is an opportunity potentially if, because we asked for more than that for this project, there is an opportunity that if one of the other communities is not ready to move forward, that we will get another million dollars or up to what we were asking for originally. So there would be no gap to be funded locally, which I think Beth has covered, but if we don't have to cover that locally, that is the goal here, so.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is council's pleasure for Resolution Number Three 2025?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Second.
Resolution Three 2025.
We have a motion. We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Three 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
You have in front of you the TIF annual report that was prepared by Baker Tilly, our municipal advisors who assist us with our financial work. This is the same report, the same format that we provide to you each year annually. It is something that we upload to Gateway, which is the State of Indiana's transparency portal. So you can always find this TIF annual report, the spending plan, all of that information on Gateway, the state's transparency portal. So if you ever need that, it is there. After the presentation this evening, this will be submitted. It is due by April 15th, so we will get that submitted after this. With the format that you see, the first section that you see there, those are the different allocation areas that we have. And as we move forward, the new Economic Development Area for Smith Hill will be added to this, so you will see that on the next report next year. The expiration dates that you see there, the last two, you'll note that those do not have expiration dates. That's because we have not issued debt on those yet. So once debt is issued on those, then there will be expiration dates that will be tied to those allocation areas. The next section, these are the individuals that are serving on the Redevelopment Commission along with their position, if they do have an elected position. There are no paid employees through the Economic Development, or, sorry, Redevelopment Commission, so there is nothing listed there. The second page that you have, this is an overall prior revenue and expenditures per allocation area. And you will note on the last page, Page Three, shows what that ending cash balance was at the end of December. So you will see those cash balances for each fund. And to note, that was as of 12/31. When you look at as of February 28th, which is the most recent financials that we have, when we look at that, we have approximately $9 million in obligations. We're anticipating 1.9 million in revenue this year. So at this point in time, we have approximately $3.2 million available for new projects. When you look down further, the other fund that we use for projects there on Page Three, the Johns Manville Fund, we currently have approximately 800,000 in obligations for that fund. We're expecting 500,000 in revenue this year, so we have approximately $1.7 million available in that fund for projects. Typically with the Johns Manville, because that is a standalone TIF, any project that we fund from there has to serve and benefit that area. And you'll see with our most recent Community Crossings Matching Grant, we utilized funds from there because there are roads that directly benefit that location, so we're able to utilize funds from that fund. When you look through the next section, those are our debt service payments that we have, and you'll see each of the different outstanding bonds that we have along with the principal and interest that was paid on that debt, when that debt will mature. You'll also see the grants and loans that were made in 2024. We only had two, one to the Main Street Organization for their strategic plan, and one to the Richmond Municipal Airport to assist with their building to house the new snow removal equipment that they received. And you may note that this was a low activity year because the Redevelopment Commission knew that it had projects coming up that were going to need a match, and so the commission over the last couple of years has been trying to ensure that they had cash available so that when these projects did come to fruition, such as the Flaherty and Collins Market Rate Apartments, the Smith Hill Project, that we had cash available, that we were able to pay cash for those projects. So that is why there was not a lot of activity. And we also did not, the commission did not turn down any requests that they received. So I am happy to answer any questions that you have. Currently on here with the Housing TIF allocation area, you'll see there's nothing there yet. At the time of this report in '24, we did not have one. On the next report, you will see something in that section.
Questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications from the mayor.
Thank you. Mr. President, we've been busy. Give you update on branding. That continues to progress. The Steering Committee met last week. We did a preview of their platform, some potential fonts and colors. Of course, no decisions made yet. We're a long ways out. It was just a preview meeting, and they're going to start meeting with department heads in the next four to six weeks, so we'll continue moving forward with branding. They were pleased, and we were pleased, that almost 900 people completed that perception survey, so thank you for that, everyone here and everyone listening. And there'll be more information to come as far as the output of that survey. Some of the findings are pretty exciting. The Comprehensive Plan refresh kicked off last week as well, and that'll start very soon. There's an updated graphic on the city's Facebook page, so you may recall that we're just refreshing the former Comprehensive Plan because it's six years old. It has to be five years old or younger in order to qualify for certain grants, so we're refreshing it. By refreshing it, different departments are starting to report, and we will go through what was in the original plan, what we did do, didn't do, and that'll come back, and we'll start rolling on that, and council members are getting involved in that too, and citizens also. And as I mentioned earlier, the Parks and Recreation Guide was in Western Way News last week. I was hoping to have copies for you here today, but they never brought them over, so. It's also on their social media and website, and they're starting to get together volunteers to clean up the parks and other places. Two weeks ago, we had a city blood drive. It's the second one of the current administration. We have more than a dozen city employees, gave the gift of life, so watch for another blood drive later this year. Try and do those twice a year now. This is National Library Week. Got my library pin on. We had a proclamation at Morrison Reeves Library, so get out there and support your local library. Tomorrow is Ivy Tech Day. Ivy Tech has a lot of events going on on their campus. Weekend flooding, you may or may not have heard that the Richmond Fire Department rescued a family of five from a home near Saddle Brook. And I say near Saddle Brook, it was really down by the undeveloped land on Chester Boulevard. One of those homes back there was surrounded by water. But having the drones made it easy to see that if they walked down from Saddle Brook on the west side of the river, they just walked right down and then walked out of the backside of the house, and water was never more than maybe ankle-deep. So it took some time, but it wasn't a swift water rescue. We didn't have to go across the river or anything like that, so. The drones were hugely helpful, and those have been a great investment. Even turned them on infrared, and you could see if there was other people out there in the woods wandering around, and there weren't, so. Worked out really well. The Street Department on Saturday morning closed Waterfall Road. You may have seen pictures of the bridge. It was damaged. The county will start repairs very soon. I think most of us know that in cities like Richmond, the county has the funds and collects taxes for bridges all over the county, including the city, except for state highway bridges, which is all NDOT. So they'll be taking care of that, and it looks like there is more damage than just the payment came off the top, so it might be a period of time before it gets repaired and reopened. Parks Department, we mentioned their Easter egg hunt is Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Glenmoeller Park Golf Course. And again, there'll be a sensory-friendly option. You can pre-register or just show up, and there'll be a separate egg hunt for sensory-needs children. And as I said earlier, the New Paris Pike cleanup is next Monday at 8:30. It was going to be today, but we delayed a week because of weather. People like nicer weather, so bring your work clothes. They'll have gloves, they'll have bags and everything, but I would bring good shoes, so we'll do that. And also, we And also, we started the 2026 budget preparation that began last week with departments having access to begin inputting their calculated or expected expenses. I believe a budget calendar was sent to councils along with department heads. And the Indiana State Assembly has combined the Senate and House 2026 budget plans into engross bill 1427, 294 pages, I don't recommend you print it. Watch for updates, comments from AMES, and that's why we no longer needed resolutions. So AMES asked us to do a resolution, all the cities have replaced on a rate title resolution, and we did that. We got on the agenda for this week, but we had to get that advertised Wednesday last week. And then late Friday, they did this, so it kind of became moved. So the bill's been engrossed, so we'll keep working with what we have, make the best of it. And AMES commented its move from devastating for municipalities to just bad. So we'll see what comes of it. There's a lot of moving pieces, though, and there's a lot of opportunities to do a few things different in a city and the county. And Plaster and I have been working very closely together and trying to figure this out, figure out a way to keep providing essential services that are important.
Questions of the mayor?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell?
Yes. First of all, if there are any unfunded liabilities for this year, could we get a list of those in the future, near future?
Unfunded liabilities.
And number two is, is are we utilizing a lobbyist at this time dealing with these tax issues?
I'm glad you asked. The city has used three different law firms for a very long time out of Indianapolis for different things. I'm sure you're aware of one of them at least. And one of those law firms that we work with has people in the state house all the time going to committees and such, and even talking to our representatives. And we met with them, we talked with them earlier this year. They said, you know, the city can't be there every day. If there's something you want us to communicate to the committees that you can't get to every day, we'd be happy to do that for you as part of our contract. But to keep legal with the regulators, we had to sign, yes, they're our lobbyists. So technically, we have a lobbyist because we didn't want them to get in trouble or the city to get in trouble if they met up with a committee when we couldn't be there and said a few words on our behalf, like they do for a bunch of other cities too. So technically, we have a lobbyist, but it's not what you really think. Does that make sense?
It does, is what's.
It's a law firm we've been using, and it's actually the same law firm RPNL uses. So when we file that, so you'll find that paperwork, because we want to be legit and upfront with, there is a committee or a, yeah, well, I just, I said it earlier, and it just spaced me again.
Is this an hourly rate or a set fee?
Just a set fee. We've already used them, so that's not anything special. But we wanted to file for, so the, if the board, you know, when they test, anybody who talks to any elected official on behalf of a city that's not a city employee should have filed a lobbyist piece of paperwork. And the same thing happens in DC.
What is that fee, can I, may I ask?
They charge us less than BBKCC, it's an annual fee, and I don't remember. I'm guessing it's, I just, I signed a purchase order recently, so it must be $48,000 a year because it was $4,000. But they do other stuff too, it's not just that.
Thank you.
Yes. That's again, one of three firms that we work with, but we wanted them to not get in trouble and the city not get in trouble. So we went ahead and signed, yes, you're our official lobbyist, air quotes.
Additional questions? Hearing none, thank you. Included in your packet, report of the Board of Public Works and Safety, the minutes of February the 27th, March 13th, and March the 20th. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there any miscellaneous business needs to come before the council at this time?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Bumbolo?
Yeah, I would like to mention, since Howard was so gracious to come here and share with us this evening, that Star Historic District is having a neighborhood spring cleanup Saturday, April 24th, from 10:00 to 12:00, and they will meet at the Star Park on North 15th Street. So I wanted to make sure I shared that.
Thank you. Any additional miscellaneous? Ordinance is on first reading.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 22, 2025, and ordinance number 23, 2025, by title only.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance 2022, excuse me, 22, 2025, and 23, 2025, by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance number 22, 2025.
I'm not going to say that, I'm just going to say an appropriation ordinance authorizing the acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the community funding projects.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Yes, this ordinance before you, was a little different than normal. We submitted this prior to coming tonight. I did call President Parker and Mayor Oler. The sanitary district was given notice of the community funding projects fiscal year 26. And the Midwest Industrial Park Sewer Upgrade Project was flagged as a high potential for that, but we had one week to submit. So I called again President Parker and Mayor Oler and asked for permission then to submit, and then to write an ordinance for acceptance of this. We have the opportunity to turn this down if we were offered it later, so it's not like we have to accept these funds. But this project that we are submitting is the Midwest Industrial Park Sewer Upgrades, both the section that is in the new industrial park, as well as the bottom section at Round Barn Road. Those two sections would both be included. The funds is up to $2 million that can be received. At this point in time, it's not sure if there will be a match, but the estimated cost of the project, we were assured that it's high enough above that that we would meet the match, whatever match may be required if one was required, so.
Are we hurting for any time on this?
Time in what manner? Like doing the project?
Yeah, know when this all needs to be done?
No, we submitted it, like I said, we had one week to submit when we were noticed. We did submit it on the 14th of March, which was the submission date, we did have that. The Midwest Industrial Park Sewer Upgrade, I think it was last year that we came before council and the sanitary board and asked permission to submit that project to SRF, which we did then. We were not in the fundable range at that point in time for that, though, the project did qualify for pooled funding at that time. So we had a PER, and we're at 90% design, so the project was ready to be submitted, so we had no issues with getting it in on the 14th.
Any questions from council at this time? Hearing none, we'll send this to finance. Thank you.
Ordinance 23, 2025, and appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget.
Good evening, council, I'm Tracy McGinnis, City Controller.
Good evening.
In 2024, the decision was made to move code enforcement, a part of the Richmond Sanitary District Fund Number 66010318, to the general fund as its own department, which would be 11010318. The 2025 budget included revenue and expenses for code enforcement as part of the sanitary district. Per the Department of Local Government Finance and the State Board of Accounts, an additional appropriation is needed to set up the new department accounts in the general fund. Once that is completed, code enforcement accounts listed in the sanitary district will be set as inactive. Pat Smoker, the Director of the Sanitary District, has agreed to pay code enforcement salaries through intergovernment transfers at a total of $561,400 for the budget year of 2025. The first section of the additional appropriation is needed to utilize these funds. We are also asking for an additional appropriation to cover the other expenses for the department, totaling $223,002.06. These expenses were also approved as part of the 2025 budget for the sanitary district and will need, excuse me, and will need to be appropriated for use in the general fund. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can you be, give us some more detail on what the other expenses are?
Okay, yes, sir, I can. The other expenses include office supplies, general supplies, other contractual services, building demolitions, telephone assembly, postage, travel, copier charges, legal publications, workers' compensation premiums, property and liability insurance, property and liability claims, and vehicle operation and maintenance. Make sure that's it. Oh, here's some more. Repair and maintenance of vehicles, uniforms and accessories, and recording fees.
Would you be able to provide that to council in an email?
Certainly. It's part of the ordinance, it's listed on the ordinance.
I thought we had it.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Mr. Purcell?
I know that annually, that sanitary district puts a given amount of money into our general fund toward the department. Was that included in our budget this year, that income?
Yes. Yes, the $561,400 was added into the intergovernmental charges for 2025.
So we added them in, we did not expense them?
Correct. What we're basically doing is a lateral move from the sanitary district into the general fund. The overall budget will not increase. The general fund budget, the general fund budget will increase. Because we're going to zero out what's left in sanitary district, then move everything over into the general fund.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any additional questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Tracy, can you tell us, can you explain that line item for building demolition?
That is exactly it. That is what the code enforcement uses. They generally contract out having buildings demolition.
These are questions.
Mr. President?
Yes?
So, if I understand correctly, the money is coming from sanitation. Code enforcement is not part of sanitation?
Well, they were. When the original 2025 budget was set up, they were part of the sanitary district. So the budget was approved for all these expenses.
Okay.
But the decision was made to move them over into the general fund, and we're just moving everything over. And to do that, the Department of Local Government Finance and the State Board of Accounts says we have to do an additional appropriation to do that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Purcell?
Yeah, that creates another question for me. So we took the revenue in through the general fund in the budget that we approved.
Yes.
For 2024.
Yes, we did.
But there was no expense side to that.
Correct. We did not, we did not move the expenses at that time, basically because we had to get or find out from the state how to approach this in the correct manner. So we held off doing that.
So code enforcement has not been in the budget in the past, the city budget?
Correct.
Mr. President?
Not in the general fund, but they have been as part of the sanitary district.
Mr. President, and that's it. When code enforcement was established, sanitary district's always paid for it, but the staff always reported to the mayor, and that's a problem with the DLGF. So they report to the mayor, they should come out of the general fund, not the sanitary district fund. So the sanitary district is still keen for it, but we need to appropriate the money to pay them. That's the only thing that's changed. But historically, they always did report to the mayor, and it was actually kind of a problem, because they didn't report to the sanitary district. But they were paid directly from the sanitary district.
Mr. President, one more question, I promise. So we have included the income or the payment from sanitary in the budget for 2024.
Yes, we have.
But not the expense side.
Correct.
Was that part of the schedule for this year?
No, it was not.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Nothing. It's okay.
Thank you very much. Going to send this to finance committee. Ordinance is on second reading.
Amended ordinance number 18, 2025, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. Goss?
This ordinance, amended ordinance 18, 2025, is for a personal property tax deduction for A. House Tool and Engineering. During the due diligence process, it was discovered that the actual investment amount is $1,170,000, not the $275,000, $1,400 that was in the original ordinance. So I think, do I need to make a motion to amend this, amend the ordinance? I believe. I'm making the motion to accept the amended ordinance, changing the amount of the investment to $1,170,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 18, 2025, to have the investment be $1,170,000, not the $275,000. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The tax abatement committee met with Kevin A. House to complete our due diligence. This investment in our community will create at least two jobs that exceed our minimum wage and benefit requirements. The manufacturing equipment is new and will allow them to expand their capabilities. The tax abatement committee recommends approval of a three-year declining 150-40 personal tax abatement for the equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Does anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of amended ordinance 18, 2025?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Kevin A. House, representing A. House Tool and Engineering at 200 Industrial Parkway, Richmond. We're excited about this investment. Over the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in business. This is a much larger machine than we've invested in before, and it'll help us to continue to just work on our business and do some things in-house that we've been sending out to Dayton and Indianapolis, still in the region, but we'll be able to do these type, this type of machining in-house from this point on. We're ready to get the equipment in. We have a 50-foot hole sitting in our plant because we had to put a pit in for this machine. It weighs about 100, if I'm not mistaken, 130,000 pounds. Can hold something up to 60,000 pounds. So this is a very large piece of equipment. Haven't seen this type of equipment in Richmond areas since the NatCo days.
Any questions of Mr. A. House at this time? Hearing none, thank you very much, and we appreciate A. House Tool continuing to expand.
Yep.
Glad to do so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the question.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Jerry Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbolo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhart?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Larry Parker?
Aye.
Eight or nine are in favor, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Ordinance number 19, 2025, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from the High Intensity Industrial District to Highway Commercial District.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Austin Purvis, Planning Director. Ordinance 19 is a zoning map amendment for the property at 2477 U.S. Highway 35, requesting to rezone the property from High Intensity Industrial to Highway Commercial. The rezone would allow the petitioner to develop the currently vacant property as a fueling station and convenience store. Common council previously referred the request to Richmond's Advisory Plan Commission for a public hearing, which was held on Wednesday, March 26. Notice of the public hearing were sent to 10 adjacent property owners, and we received two adjacent property owner responses that were in favor of the petition. And then one member of the public did speak out in opposition to the petition during the public hearing, citing concerns about traffic safety and design along U.S. Highway 35 and I-70 in general, and at the Love's Travel Stop intersection in particular. To that point, a required traffic study was conducted for the proposed site, and based on the recommendations of that study, the developer has agreed to install a traffic signal in a new northbound right turn lane at its own costs, and NDOT has since expressed support for the signal in the turn lane at this location. for the signal in the turn lane at this location. With this in mind, planning staff did recommend approval of the rezone, and the plan commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the ordinance to common council. Another thing worth noting here is that in addition to recommending approval of the rezone, the plan commission also recommends that the property be annexed into the city boundaries. The property is immediately contiguous to the city boundary. If you can see Highway 35 up there, the city boundary line runs directly up the center of Highway 35. So the Loves property to the west is within the city boundaries, and the subject property, which is highlighted in red up there, is outside of the boundary. So that's not necessarily something that you all need to address this evening, but just kind of putting on your radar that this project will likely come with an annexation request that we would bring back to you at a later date. The agent for this request is here to speak more about the project this evening. But if you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to address those.
Questions at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Dustin, so I watched the meeting via YouTube and heard the concerns from the individual. I can't remember the term you used, but NDOT being in favor of the turn signal, the stoplight. Did NDOT have any other recommendations? I know that there have been accidents there. I know traffic concerns, speeds coming in. Did NDOT have any additional recommendations in that area?
None that I'm aware of, but I know that Eric, the agent for the petition, they were speaking to him. So if they had additional recommendations, he would probably be a better source for those.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I have one. It may be inherent, I just haven't found it. But I don't see any specific writing in here that says that the petitioner will put in that light at their own cost.
That, I mean, that is a condition.
Is that true? It's not in this ordinance?
No, that's not in the ordinance.
Then we can amend it and put it in there, right?
I think so, yes. I think NDOT's going to require it regardless, but I think it doesn't hurt for.
I think we should require it. Does counsel agree with me or not?
Yes.
Mr. President? I'd like to have that amendment, please.
Second.
I can't make the amendment.
Okay.
My move to amend the ordinance.
Second.
I want it done right.
I move to amend the ordinance to require a traffic signal at the intersection between Loves Truck Stop and the soon-to-be 7-Eleven store on U.S. 35.
Second.
And the additional, can we put the additional traffic lane in there as well?
So it'll be the equivalent four lanes there.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. The motion is that we will require the petitioner to install a street light, excuse me, a stoplight at their own expense. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Ordinance 19 is still on public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Please come forward.
Mr. Kappa, I think, is it okay for the agent for the petition to give his presentation first?
Doesn't make any difference who goes next.
Okay. Good evening. It's good to see you all again.
Good evening.
Jeff Kappa, Hundred Point Drive here in Richmond. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background, but I'm glad to hear that the new company is willing to go ahead and put the traffic light in at their expense, if I heard you correctly.
Yes.
During my tenure as sheriff, we had fatal crash in that general facility. And we also had numerous complaints from citizens about that intersection. That prompted me to make contact, at that time, State Representative Dick Ham. He facilitated meeting with NDOT, myself, and hisself on more than one occasion, trying to get a light installed at that location, but unfortunately, we were not successful. NDOT did take that serious, though, and they did some roadwork and signage and so on at that location. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of history of what took place prior to this. When I contacted President Parker about this after I read about it, I wasn't aware that they were going to go ahead and pay for the light, which I'm glad to hear. Because I know this council is concerned for the safety of our citizens here in Richmond and Wayne County, but also the citizens that may be traveling to and from in the area. So I do support that, that they do put that light in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eric Carter with Y Engineers, 10-505 North College Avenue, Indianapolis, Indiana. And yes, they are going to pay for the signal at their cost. As you all know, the site there crossed from the Loves on U.S. 35, just northwest of I-70. And we got a site plan here. So we're proposing a full access with a signal across from Loves, and then a right-in, right-out further to the west. With the design of the traffic plans, NDOT's going to require a median through there so that it's forced to be right-in, right-out. They find that pork chops really don't work. So that's the two entrances that we're proposing. We've got six auto 12-fueling position and then a four-lane commercial feeling in the back there. We do have some site restraints. There's a gas main, a high-pressure gas main cutting across the property. So we kind of had to keep the buildings away from that. So it kind of goes between the building and the commercial feeling lanes in the back. We still have to get approval by Centerpoint Energy for the crossing of the pavement. We've tried to limit having utility crossings as least as possible. So yeah, that's kind of an overview of the site plan. This is not your typical Speedway which you see around here. This is 7-Elevens Gen 2 prototype. You'll see him further south. So this potentially could be the one, the first or second one, depends on another site approval in the state of Indiana. It will be branded Speedway. That's kind of the known brand around here. But it's about 4,800 square feet. And then some of the signage. And we still have a couple of variances to go through to get the signage. So we'll be vetted with the city on that. Back to the site plan. I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions for counsel at this time?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
I see your retention pond. What percentage of hard surface do you have planned for that?
I'm not sure of the exact percentage, but we're meeting city ordinance. Like I said, with the gas main crossing, we're splitting up the drainage into two basins. This necessarily may not be a wet pond. It may be a dried attention. We're still working through those details, and we'll submit to the city and the county to get approvals of the stormwater.
Additional questions from counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Please come forward. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of ordinance 19, amended ordinance 192025? What is counsel's pleasure?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Justin Burkhart.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
All are in favor?
Motion carried. Thank you.
Ordinance number 202025, an ordinance of the City of Richmond, Indiana, designated an area within the city as an economic development target area.
Ordinance number 202025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to call the question? Please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Justin Burkhart.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
All are in favor?
Motion carried. Thank you.
Ordinance 212025, an ordinance authorizing the City of Richmond, Indiana, to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, Smith Hill Project, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Ordinance 212025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, counsel. Valerie Schaefer, President of the Economic Development Corporation, residing at 39 Circle Drive in Richmond. I am here this evening to speak in favor of this ordinance. As you know, it's been a long road to get to this point where we are looking for the financing to bring the Smith Hill subdivision project forward. I've already spoken to you many times about the importance of housing and the need for housing in this community if we want to continue to grow and retain our current population. But as it results to the actual pledging of tax increment financing, this project certainly meets the but-for test. So but for this new development occurring, there would not be any new tax revenue to pledge. But for you pledging this tax revenue, the development will not move forward. So this is an incredibly important part of the project. And I've talked to you in the past about where we are with ready-to allocations. While we do have a $30 million ready allocation from the IEDC, Indiana Economic Development Corporation, there's just a tentative allocation towards this project currently from the region. We are still waiting for the IEDC to formally approve it. However, in order for the IEDC to approve it, we have to have our public match because it is a true one-to-one match. So we have requested the $4.33 million from the IEDC. And so we're hoping this evening with your support that we can demonstrate to them that we have that match secured so that then we can move forward with receiving the allocation. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Valray at this time?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, I would like to say that this evening at 6:00 PM, the Economic Development Commission met and passed Resolution Number 32025, recommending passage of this ordinance.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's like Groundhog Day. You've heard this speech before. So I'm Jason Troutwine. I live at 3315 Dorothy Lane, which is about a block and a half from this proposed development. So as a resident who lives nearby it, I'm in favor of it. But also, I'll come to, but I think as far as the property use and that kind of thing, it's not really the topic of the conversation tonight. I think the topic of the conversation is, is this a good use of taxpayer money? And something that's needed in this community. So I serve as Vice President at Reed Health as well. Over the past two years, I've been involved in a lot of these conversations. So Smith Hill, Chester Heights, Elder Bearman, Deer Trace, for the same reasons for all of them. Because we desperately need housing in this region. Right now, as you all have heard before, you've heard me talk about this, we have 3,200 employees. About 1,400 of them live outside of our region. If we could just have some of those folks be able to live in our community, it means that they're not a phone call away from Cuttering or someplace else and be able to work there and not have to move. If they're living here, it makes that conversation to leave a lot, lot harder. Just for what it's worth, kind of in my, as part of my role at Reed, I also serve, I serve on the Preble County Development Partnership Board, Connersville EDG Board, the Wayne County Chamber Board, the East Central Indiana Regional Development Partnership Board, and the Indiana Chamber Board. Housing is a conversation on every single one of those boards that I'm part of. It's all we talk about. Not all we talk about, but it's a lot about what we talk about. And today, for example, I was at the, I met with some state legislators to talk about some legislation. And our conversation about some of the things from a healthcare perspective came back to economic development. A lot of our woes aren't going to be solved unless we have economic development. We look at our payer, our payer percentages, for example, for Reed. 10 years ago, we had 26% to 28% of our population was insured. Today, that's about 19% to 20% of our population. It's an economic development issue. Went to visit Fort Wayne a couple of weeks ago, met with their chamber president and with Don Kate, who many of you know from Three Rivers. And Fort Wayne's had a resurgence in their town. And my question to the chamber president, and who's also their lead, the Lead Economic Development Officer, said, "What changed?" He said, "We decided to invest in ourselves, finally, and get out of our own way." So I'm asking tonight that we use this money to help us move things forward. We've got a lot of momentum right now. And now's not the time to stop. So please, please do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? None, thank you. Any questions? None. Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak in favor of this ordinance at this time? Is there anyone like to speak in opposition to amended ordinance 21-2025?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Final comments before you ask for the, anybody have a final comment?
This is absolutely necessary.
Yep.
I have a final comment I'd like to make, too. I voted against this project because of the fact that it is in my district, and I'm still not thrilled that it's going to be put in that location. I do understand that this needs to be done to properly finance this, so I will be voting in favor of it. But I did vote in opposition upfront, so I wanted everybody to know that. Now, Mr. Goss.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I, too, voted against this project for numerous reasons. I don't want to be anybody's stumbling block, but I hope it works out the way you all want it to work out. So I will be voting for it, but I just wanted to make it known. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Mr. Goss?
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Justin Burkhart.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
All are in favor.
Thank you. Motion carried. Is there any unfinished business to come before us at this time? There are none?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor for adjournment, please say aye.
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 We stand adjourned. Thank you. RP and L in 10 minutes.
Good evening, and welcome to the Richmond Power and Light Meeting for April the 7th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are in favor, or all are here.
Thank you.
And we're in favor.
Everyone's in favor of the meeting. Good. You guys are excited.
We're all in favor.
Yes. All right. You've all received the packet from March the 3rd. Now is the time where we're approving the minutes. Are there any comments, questions, concerns?
I make a motion to approve the minutes if there are no corrections as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from March the 3rd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills to be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and moved for approval of $8,965,737.37.
Second.
We have, yeah, some money. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills for $8,965,737.37. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report from the General Manager.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pictured, to start off the meeting, are some of our 4th grade students in our Partners in Education Program at Hibbard. They were the winners of the safety poster contest, so they received movie tickets and pizza for their efforts. So congratulations to them. But we'll get to the action items tonight. The first is, we'd like to award the bid on a new mobile power unit for the line department as previously approved in the capital budget. We did have one bid, Altech finished out of Illinois. Their base bid was $87,583 with an estimated delivery date of June 27th, very specific, and a budgeted amount of $100,000, so we are under budget for this item. We are looking for your approval tonight if you wouldn't mind.
Of awarding?
Of awarding the bid, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid on one new mobile power unit for the line department to Altech.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Altech for our new mobile power unit for the line department. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to request permission to open bids on a new 2025 compact pickup truck for the engineering department as previously approved in both the '24 and '25 budget. Last year, we were unable to solicit bids. We didn't get any, have any interest. But first, I do have the proof of publication. I'd like to enter into the record, so would ask that you approve our proof of publication before we open bids.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the publication of the bid packet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I do have two bids to open tonight for this. As a reminder, we do have a trade, that cute little van there, the 2013 Ford trains at Cargo Van that's spent its life tooling around Richmond. So our first bid is for a 2024 Ford Ranger XL 4x4, $36,983 without trade. They will offer us $1,250 for the trade, so we would have, the bid would be $35,733. So this says immediate possession unless sold prior to the decision. So obviously, this one is one they have on their lot.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
You said 2024. Did you mean 2025?
No, so this one is a 2024 model that they have on the lot.
Oh, okay.
So.
So it's a brand-new, year-old, okay. All right. Thank you.
So this must have somehow become available since we bid last fall, because last fall, they didn't have any available. Second one, and that was from Wetzel, I'm sorry, Wetzel Ford. The second one is also from Wetzel Ford. This is for a 2025 model, without trade, $38,079, same trade of $1,250, a total price of $36,829 with a delivery date of 12 to 30 weeks. So we would like, if it's okay, to take this under advisement and come back to you at a future date.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to refer the bids for the one new 2025 or 2024 compact crew pickup truck to the General Manager for Tabulation, Evaluation, and Recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to assign this task to the General Manager to take under advisement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item is to request to receive, to open bids, I'm sorry, on a new 2025 or plus we have there because depending on how many years it takes to build. 55-foot bucket truck for the line department is previously approved in the budget. Like the other one, I do have proof of publication, so I'd like to enter that into the official record for this project if you would like to make a motion to approve that.
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the promotion of the, the proof of publication. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We do have a trade, which is a 2015, approximately 50,000 miles and 10,000 hours, but the hours are the true story there because it's a lot of idling and doing work. So the first bid is from Altech. And let's see here, the price is $315,677. Their only offering is $10,000 in trade for a total price of $305,677. And we have one more to open. And we said sealed bid. They double sealed this one, so. This one's for Terex. South Dakota, it says. Let's see what page they put the bid sheet on. Price 369, $359,628. Doesn't look like they are interested in accepting our trade, so total price would be $359,628.
Tony, does, does that include delivery?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, I make a motion to refer this to the General Manager for Tabulation and Evaluation and Recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds to refer these bids for advisement to our General Manager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And we have another truck. We're trying to get our bidding done early this year so we don't run into some of those projects we have with not having interest later in the year, especially on these smaller trucks. But tonight, I am requesting to go out to bid for one new 2025 Class III Extended Cab 4x4 Truck with a utility body for the line department as previously approved in the budget. So the trade would be this particular truck. It's Unit 44, 2012 Ford with approximately 120,000 miles. This truck is now, is now used as our on-call vehicle foreman truck, so it is, it does get a lot of miles now. So it is taken home by the, by the foreman on rotation. We also use it to transport transformers, smaller ones, to job sites, and obviously, the utility body is needed because it is a trouble truck, so it's stocked with materials for after-hours emergencies. So we're just requesting permission to go out to bid.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize General Manager to receive bids on one new 2025 Class III Extended Cab 4x4 Truck with utility body for the line department.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the General Manager to receive bids on what was presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And tonight, I would like to give you a brief update on some things that have been in the news. Like it says here, I don't think there's any shortage of news right now, but some things, some things that do affect us here locally at the federal level. So I don't know if you saw this recently, but, and again, I'm not being, this is not political, these are just, just facts. But the EPA, this is the headline, you know, "Launches Biggest Deregulation Action in U.S. History, 31 Actions to Power the Great American Comeback." So how do these affect us locally when it comes to our utility? So of those 31, that is small up there, I apologize. One of the items is that the reconsideration of what's called the MATS rule has to do with mercury and air toxic standards. So this is something that Empa would have had to do if, if this is not reconsidered. Something Empa will have to do for additional air quality standards on the stack at the Whitewater Valley Station, the coal generating plant. This is something Empa said that isn't, you know, it's not cheap, but it is something that's worth doing to